Hello.
How are you?
Welcome, I want to welcome everyone to our regular November meeting. Ms. Dance, we do have a quorum. Mr. Sullivan will not be with us tonight. We will begin with an invocation from Michelle Antoine and also a pledge of allegiance led by one of our students. And Dr. Pierce, I'll let you introduce.
Yes, good evening, board members. This afternoon, we have Ally Bogle. She is a senior class president at Cleveland High and has been an outstanding student leader and role model for her classmates throughout her educational career. She's a strong leader who displays compassion to everyone around her and is always willing to lend a helping hand. Ally is known for encouraging her peers and uplifting those who need a boost of confidence. In addition to her leadership within the school, she has also been known as a strong leader on the volleyball court, demonstrating teamwork, perseverance, and school pride. She's also a member of the superintendent's Leadership Council, which we met most recently, where I learned she's big into the arts and heading to App State for that. And we're so proud to have her here today to set the example for her peers and a positive impact on Cleveland High School. She will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance today. Thanks for being here, Ally.
Okay, we'll stand for the invocation and then the pledge.
Almighty God, we come to you with your gift alone, come to wisdom and true understanding. Look with favor, we pray, on our universities, colleges, and schools, especially Johnston County Public Schools, that knowledge may be increased among us and wholesome learning flourish and abound. Bless those who teach, and we pray you would bless those who learn and grant in humility of the heart that they may overlook to you, the fountain of all wisdom, through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ally. Thank you so much. I will now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we enter into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 1, 3, 5, and 6, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115C, 321, to consider matters relating to the initial employment of an individual employee and to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Donovan. Any discussion? All those in favor of going into closed session, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you, we are now in closed session.
If we focus on what we can control while we have them here, we can make a difference in the lives of our students. So our purpose will be fulfilled if we can remember that we can make a difference while we have them here. I am Taki C. Dunston, Principal at Benson Elementary. I have been here for 11 years. When I walk into Benson Elementary every day, what inspires me is knowing that I have students, staff, and parents that are counting on me to make this the best place for learning, to make this the best place to work, to make this the best place to see students while you are at work as a parent. This is, it's just one of my passions to be here. Being named Principal of the Year personally means that I have set the tone and provided an environment for staff and students, parents, community, to come in and feel that they have a place that they can call home. Being named Principal of the Year allowed me to recognize that what I'm doing here at Benson Elementary has been seen, it is seen, and that there, a difference has been made in the environment. It's, it's hard when I see students that have a difficult time separating from their parents. I so understand that. Nobody wants to separate from that safe space, that safe person. And so that's why it's so important that I build an environment or establish an environment that will allow students to see it as a home away from home and feel the joys of being here. It's just always important for me to provide that place that they want to come to. My North Star is making sure that teachers and students come to an environment that will support them in learning and in teaching. I want students to come and feel good about being at school, excited about learning. I want teachers to come in to feel the joys of being a teacher and having the opportunity to work with students day in and day out, not thinking of it as a chore or even work, but something that's fun, that they enjoy doing. And if the teachers come in with that passion, then that passion is then transferred to our students, and our students come in with that same thrill of being at school and being excited about learning new things and showing what they are capable of doing. Our ultimate goal here at Benson Elementary is to be the first Title I school in Johnston County to be an A-performing school. It is our goal that we have set and we are working hard to achieve. So we haven't gotten there, but it's coming.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where there's always something great happening. Today, we're taking you on a visual tour, giving you a major update on our exciting construction and bond projects. Our first stop is Cooper Academy, a campus that's undergone a massive renovation and revitalization. Thanks to the 2022 bond, we added 20 classrooms, new offices, resource rooms, staff workrooms, and much-needed group restrooms. These additions have truly tied the school together, and Cooper is already getting a boost from the 2024 bond. The entire campus now features a brand-new, state-of-the-art fire alarm system. Next up is Swift Creek Elementary, a truly exciting addition to our district. This marks our 25th elementary school, a testament to Johnston County's vibrant growth. This stunning, over 900-capacity school showcases vibrant colors and brilliant economic design. The construction of the new Wilsons Mills High School, or WMHS, is progressing rapidly and remains on schedule for its fall 2026 opening. Visit the site today, and you'll see significant progress outside. All spectator stands are in place, and the athletic fields are either fully installed or well underway. The exterior of the building is nearing completion, giving a clear view of the finished structure. Inside, work is moving just as quickly. The first and second levels are heavily sheet-rocked, framing is nearly complete, and crews have even begun priming the walls. We are so pleased with the speed and quality of this construction and look forward to sharing more milestones as we head toward the 2026 school year. We had the opportunity, thanks to the county commissioners, to go ahead and reduce overcrowding and remove mobiles at Cleveland High School. This was a fast-paced project that was completed in time for students to come back to school. This addition made it possible to remove all the mobiles on campus and make a secure traversal between classes without the need to go outside or to mobiles. During the October 28, 2025 special session meeting, the Johnston County Board of Education voted unanimously to approve the Clayton High rebuild project. This exciting, long-awaited project will provide state-of-the-art facilities for Johnston County students, including 99 total teaching spaces, 19 CTE classes/ labs, 13 science labs, a main and auxiliary gym, athletic fields and facilities, an extraordinary auditorium with a seating capacity of 762, and so much more, providing the learning spaces Clayton area families will be proud of for many years to come. The new 278,000-square-foot facility will serve as a cornerstone for 21st-century learning, designed with a focus on safety and security, state-of-the-art learning environments, athletic and fine art spaces, and innovative technology and learning labs. While the design embraces modern educational needs, it also preserves elements of the school's historic culture that have defined generations of Clayton Comets. The Johnston County Board of Commissioners will vote on the project during their upcoming November 2025 regular-scheduled meeting. JCPS plans to begin construction soon. The 2024 bond is already putting shovels in the ground across the county. Currently underway, we have the full build-out of Thanksgiving Elementary, adding six classrooms. Cleveland Elementary and Four Oaks Elementary are both receiving major, much-needed HVAC overhauls to bring them up to today's standards. And finally, projects in the design phase include additions at McGee's Elementary to add two new four-classroom wings, a new metal roof project over at East Clayton Elementary, and an exciting track and tennis court upgrade starting at North Johnston High in May of 2026. North Johnston High will also be receiving a press box for their baseball/softball field that will start in the next few weeks.
Johnston County 8th graders have a lot to think about after a two-day event aimed at helping them find their jobs of the future. The Joe CoWorks Career Fair introduced those students to major companies like Novo Nordisk. WREL's Grace Holland found out how we can prepare future workers when the job market is changing rapidly.
What's your dream job?
Being a medical surgeon.
My dream job, it's actually quite complex.
Astronaut.
I do want to be like an instructor or something.
A sports agent.
These Johnston County middle schoolers are hoping to meet the right people to make their dreams happen.
To be a farmer.
Why?
Running big, heavy machine and taking care of a field every day.
The Joe CoWorks Career Expo.
So you'd start out as an apprentice and then you just work your way up.
Inviting about 3,500 8th graders to learn about the companies in their communities.
We're really hoping that the kids can see themselves, you know, maybe working at Novo Nordisk one day.
Bio-pharma is a, is a really big industry and it's growing rapidly in eastern North Carolina. And from our walks of life, you have an opportunity in bio-pharma.
Organizers work closely with the county school district.
It's significantly important.
And host Johnston Community College.
This is the best opportunity for us because we catch them just at such a young age.
To make sure students are ready for what comes after graduation.
We've seen a couple of classes already who have, who came through this as 8th graders have graduated and now they're into college or the workforce.
They'll also have the option to do mock job interviews and internships through Joe CoWorks in high school.
Learning about more things can really help my mind to grow and understand there's not just one choice out there, there's multiple of them.
In Johnston County, Grace Holland, WREL News.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where innovation meets excellence and every student is inspired to soar. With over 37,000 students and more than 5,000 dedicated professionals, we are more than just a school district. We are a family, a vibrant, growing, diverse community with one clear goal: academic excellence. Our North Star: student proficiency and academic growth. And by staying true to this vision, Johnston County Public Schools has earned district-wide recognition for excellence. As our population grows, so does our commitment. With the help of our Board of Commissioners and dedicated stakeholders, we're building new schools, modernizing facilities, and creating innovative learning environments designed for 21st-century success. This is a community-wide effort, a partnership built on trust, collaboration, and a shared vision for the future. At Johnston County Public Schools, we believe that every student deserves the opportunity to thrive, in the classroom and in life. And every educator and employee deserves a career where they can grow and make an impact. We are Johnston County Public Schools, united in purpose and committed to excellence. Join us as we build the future, one student at a time.
We are getting our first look of renderings of the new Clayton High School.
During its meeting last week, members voted to approve a project that would rebuild Clayton High School.
We're also getting our first look at plans for the new Clayton High School.
Clayton High School getting a major makeover.
Clayton High School is now on the books for a rebuild.
Johnston County Board of Education voted to approve that project last night. It will include a new 278,000-square-foot facility with state-of-the-art learning and athletic spaces, labs as well. Full completion is expected to be in the fall of 2028, costing more than $134 million. Now, according to school leaders, this new campus will help meet the demand of their growing district.
If we focus on what we can control while we have them here...
It's hard when I see students that have a difficult time separating from their parents. I so understand that. Nobody wants to separate from that safe space, that safe person. And so, that's why it's so important that I build an environment or establish an environment that will allow students to see it as a home away from home and feel the joys of being here. It's just always important for me to provide that place that they want to come to. My North Star is making sure that teachers and students come to an environment that will support them in learning and in teaching. I want students to come and feel good about being at school, excited about learning. I want teachers to come in to feel the joys of being a teacher and having the opportunity to work with students day in and day out, not thinking of it as a chore or even work, but something that's fun that they enjoy doing. And if the teachers come in with that passion, then that passion is then transferred to our students. And our students come in with that same thrill of being at school and being excited about learning new things and showing what they are capable of doing. Our ultimate goal here at Benson Elementary is to be the first Title I school in Johnston County to be an A-performing school. It is our goal that we have set and we are working hard to achieve. So, we haven't gotten there, but it's coming.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where there's always something great happening. Today, we're taking you on a visual tour, giving you a major update on our exciting construction and bond projects. Our first stop is Cooper Academy, a campus that's undergone a massive renovation and revitalization. Thanks to the 2022 bond, we added 20 classrooms, new offices, resource rooms, staff workrooms, and much-needed group restrooms. These additions have truly tied the school together, and Cooper is already getting a boost from the 2024 bond. The entire campus now features a brand-new, state-of-the-art fire alarm system. Next up is Swift Creek Elementary, a truly exciting addition to our district. This marks our 25th elementary school, a testament to Johnston County's vibrant growth. This stunning, over-900-capacity school showcases vibrant colors and brilliant economic design. The construction of the new Wilson's Mills High School, or WMHS, is progressing rapidly and remains on schedule for its fall 2026 opening. Visit the site today, and you'll see significant progress outside. All spectator stands are in place, and the athletic fields are either fully installed or well underway. The exterior of the building is nearing completion, giving a clear view of the finished structure. Inside, work is moving just as quickly. The first and second levels are heavily sheet-rocked. Framing is nearly complete, and crews have even begun priming the walls. We are so pleased with the speed and quality of this construction and look forward to sharing more milestones as we head toward the 2026 school year. We had the opportunity, thanks to the county commissioners, to go ahead and reduce overcrowding and remove mobiles at Cleveland High School. This was a fast-paced project that was completed in time for students to come back to school. This addition made it possible to remove all the mobiles on campus and make a secure traversal between classes without the need to go outside or to mobiles. During the October 28, 2025 special session meeting, the Johnston County Board of Education voted unanimously to approve the Clayton High rebuild project. This exciting, long-awaited project will provide state-of-the-art facilities for Johnston County students, including 99 total teaching...
Welcome back. We are so excited to have all of you here in the room with us. We have already started our meeting. We have had our invocation and our pledge, and now are returning from closed session. But I do want to welcome each of you here to this, your boardroom. We're excited to have you here. And at this time, I'm going to call on Mr. Carr for special recognitions.
Good evening, Dr. Pierce, Chair Andrews, members of the board. It is a great day to be here today. Each month, we have the opportunity to learn more about some of our most outstanding students. In this month, we have six of our Character Ed students. If you all would please come join me up here next to the podium. We can have three on this side and then three on this side. All right. Parents, if you would, please come and join us. Stand behind the board and take all the pictures that you want to. We're going to do a lot of picture-taking or picture-sharing on social media over the next week and a half, but we want you to grab pictures that you want as well. Thank you, ma'am. All right. As I mentioned earlier, we've got six individuals who have gathered the attention of their principals. And their principals have shared a lot of great things about them just simply off of their character. As you all know, character is a very important part of being a well-rounded individual. And so, we're excited about these students and everything that they bring to Johnston County Public Schools. First, we're going to celebrate Mr. Ethan Collier. If you would, raise your hand, Mr. Ethan. Ethan is a 12th-grade student at Clayton High, where Ms. Melissa Hubbard has been leading the comment community to great success. Ethan is being recognized for loyalty. Ethan leads by example and dedicates himself to numerous school organizations, amassing over 300 hours of community service. Wow. He serves as the president of both the Comment Ambassadors and the Bridge Club, while also actively participating in the Student Government Association and the National Honor Society. Ethan's willingness to step in and assist wherever needed showcases his commitment to making a difference. His primary goal remains to serve his community and make a meaningful impact in the world. Congratulations, Ethan, on being recognized as the November Character Ed student for Clayton High. Next, we have Ms. Haley Moon. If you would, please raise your hand. Ms. Moon is an eighth-grade student at Clayton Middle, where Ms. Sandra Morris is doing an extraordinary job as principal. Haley is being recognized for being dependable. Haley can always be trusted to complete any task she begins with care, excellence, and attention to detail. Haley is quick to volunteer for various projects around the school and follows through on every commitment, demonstrating maturity beyond her years. Academically, Haley maintains outstanding grades through her consistent effort and determination. She is respectful, polite, and displays exceptional manners at all times. Haley's reliability, strong work ethic, and positive attitude make her a role model for her peers. Congratulations, Haley, for being recognized as the November Character Ed student for Clayton Middle. Next, we have Eolana Rivera. If you would, please raise your hand. I promised her I would not mess up her name. And she is a proud nail artist, as you can see her fancy nails. She shared that with me also. Eolana is a fifth-grade student at Cooper Academy, where the principal is Mr. Stoke, who is consistently and continuously improving the school in every aspect. Eolana is being recognized for being responsible. She is an outstanding student who consistently demonstrates responsibility in the classroom. She comes to class every day prepared and ready to learn. Eolana is organized and shows leadership in her academics and among her peers. Her bright smile that she's showing right now and positive attitude brings a wonderful presence to the classroom. In addition, Eolana is an enthusiastic reader and a dedicated member of the Battle of the Books team at Cooper Academy. Congratulations, Eolana Rivera, for being recognized as the November Character Ed student for Cooper Academy. Next, we have Mariah Sawyer, who is a fifth-grade student at East Clayton Elementary. If you would, please raise your hand. There we are. The principal at East Clayton Elementary is Lauren Sabo, who has been leading the schools to amazing success. Mariah is being recognized for being respectful. Mariah is a student who exemplifies the character trait of respect. She is polite when speaking with both her peers and teachers, and she consistently shows that she values all people through her excellent listening skills and thoughtful responses. She works well with her peers during class projects, group discussions, and all other school activities. Mariah has a positive attitude and always puts forth her best effort. Even when others around her are not always doing the right thing, Mariah holds firm with her respectful attitude. Congratulations, Mariah, for being recognized as the November Character Ed student for East Clayton Elementary. Next, we have Taraji Wright, who is a fifth-grade student at West Clayton Elementary, where Sarah Willoughby is doing a phenomenal job as principal. Taraji, if you would, please raise your hand. There she is. Taraji is being recognized for her integrity. Taraji approaches every task with enthusiasm, focus, and a genuine desire to learn. No matter the challenge, she always puts her best foot forward. Her respectful and kind nature makes her a trusted friend and a valued member of the school community. Taraji Wright demonstrates strong character traits such as respect, responsibility, dependability, and compassion for others. She can always be counted on to do the right thing, encourage her peers, and make choices that reflect her excellent character. Congratulations, Taraji, for being recognized as the November Character Ed student for West Clayton Elementary. And last, but not least, we have Leilani Hines, who is a fourth-grade student at Wilson's Mills Elementary, where Ms. Don D. Holland has made an impact to the overall school's success. Leilani is being recognized for being respectful. Leilani listens when others are speaking, whether it's a teacher giving instructions or peers sharing their thoughts. She listens with an open heart. Leilani always does everything that is asked of her, and she does so with a smile on her face. She leads by example as a true role model, bringing her positive energy into the classroom every single day. Leilani is the epitome of respect because she is such a considerate person who works well with others and is constantly willing to lend a helping hand. Congratulations, Leilani, for being recognized as the November Character Ed student for Wilson's Mills Elementary. This concludes our recognitions. Leilani, if you would, please, if you will, lead the others around to shake the hands of the board members. And if you all will, please just follow her around. Come this way. Good job.
Thank you so much to the parents and the staff members of the schools. Parents, we thank you especially for sharing your precious child with us, and we're just so grateful that you're here tonight. Thanks, Kate.
Good evening. I have the pleasure to present our Employees of the Month for the month of November. First, we have Ms. Allison Garrus. Ms. Garrus? Ms. Allison Garrus is a teacher assistant at West Clayton Elementary. Ms. Garrus consistently goes above and beyond in the four classrooms that she supports. Without being asked, she readily steps in to assist the entire first-grade team of seven teachers. She is always willing to work with students one-on-one, in small groups, or with the whole class. Her adaptability and eagerness to help are remarkable. Ms. Garrus builds strong, positive relationships with all the students she serves, earning their respect and affection. She demonstrates exceptional patience with students who have special needs and is always ready to provide support. Her positive attitude and willingness to help in any way make her an absolute joy to work with. Thank you for all you do for our students and staff at Johnston County Public Schools. Allison Garrus, our November Classified Employee of the Month. Next, we have our Certified Employee of the Month for the month of November, Carmen Young. Carmen Young is a fifth-grade teacher at Wilson's Mills Elementary. Ms. Carmen Young is an exceptional educator whose 25-year dedication to Wilson's Mills Elementary School has profoundly impacted students and colleagues alike. Once an inspiring teacher to the nominator and now a valued colleague, Ms. Young is described as a light in the school. She's patient, creative... She's patient, creative, and deeply committed to her students' success. She fosters a positive collaborative environment and embodies the mission of Johnston County Public Schools through her excellence, teamwork, and service. Her lasting influence and unwavering passion continue to inspire all who work with her. Thank you for all you do for the students and staff of Johnston County Public Schools. Carmen Young, our November Certified Employee of the Month.
Thank you to all our employees. Especially, we have honored these two tonight, and we're so grateful to you for your commitment to the next generation because, as we have said before, there's no greater calling than to help the pathway of the next generation. So, thank you so much for your commitment. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Pierce, who has a special recognition.
Good evening, board members. On the evening of October 17th, I got the call that no one wants to receive, that we had a student on a football field that was unresponsive and CPR was being performed on him. After making a catch that he had made 100 times, Christian Clark, a senior wide receiver at Cleveland High School, was tackled and immediately experienced a cardiac arrest. There were two dynamic individuals, and I'm going to call them up here at this time, Ms. Lakendra McKnight and Mr. Kenny Jones. Can y'all step up towards the podium? They jumped into action immediately, administering chest compressions and other emergency response procedures, including the use of the school's AED. Without the quick care and professional response of these two individuals, it is believed that Christian's situation would have been significantly worse. They provided life-saving measures, and for that, we are truly grateful. According to the report, Christian's heart had stopped beating, and without their heroic acts, it is believed that he would not have survived the incident. Some doctors have even called him a walking miracle. Clark was transported to a local healthcare facility for further treatment, and it was determined there that he had suffered a rare cardiac arrest known as cumotecardis. I might have messed that up. It is a heart attack brought on by a hard impact to the chest. However, within days, he was back at school and back on the sidelines where he loves to be. At this time, we are here, and we're going to recognize Ms. Lakendra McKnight and Mr. Jones. There's a quote that says, "We who are strong ought to bear with the fallings of the weak and not to please ourselves." On October 17th, that is precisely what you did. As Christian was at his weakest moment, you stepped in and performed extraordinary care and gave him a chance to live. Because of that, he is alive and well and growing stronger each and every day. Because of these acts today, I am honored to present each of you with the JCPS Heroism Award for the selfless act of love that resulted in the saving of another's life. Let's give these individuals a round of applause. For your selfless act of heroism that resulted in the saving of another life, November 10th, 2010. And just so you all know, Kenny continued CPR as they were cutting off his pads, including getting cut on the hand during the process of it. Kenny does not have, he's currently got a medical injury that keeps him from running right now and still got across that field and provided that what's needed. So, congratulations. Thank you so much. Once again, Lakendra McKnight, for your selfless act of heroism that resulted in the saving of another's life. For everyone in here, Lakendra knew exactly what to do, and she was calling the shots that night. She knew where the AED was. She knew what to need to do. And if you watched the video, these two individuals did not pause. And I can say forever, we're grateful for your action. Thank you so much.
Thank you both again. Sort of hard to move into the rest of the meeting after that, isn't it? Board members, we will now look at the adjustment to the agenda. Board members, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation that we remove Item D items from Personnel Chief of Human Resources.
Okay, we will remove the items. That's D. I believe that's 6D. And that would then make Capital Projects, Letter D. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Here are none. I'll call for the vote for approval of the agenda as it has been amended. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Dr. Pierce?
Madam Chair, at this time, I ask the board to approve consent agenda items number 1 through 13.
I'll entertain a motion for approval. I have a motion by Mr. Carroll. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Lee. Any discussion?
I have one question before we move forward. There was a question asked about the bus transportation cameras. And we had some information come back about a cloud-based service, which wasn't substantially more added to the contract. Did we move forward with that?
Yeah, it was an additional $7,000, and we would need to fund that through local funds. So, it does not require the board, and we're currently looking at ways to find a source for that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Here are none. I'll call for the vote of the approval of all consent items. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Ms. Whittington?
Good evening, board members. Each year, Johnston County Public Schools are required to adopt an academic calendar in compliance with state legislation and aligned to the needs of students, staff, and families. The calendar development process includes the review of state mandates, instructional hour requirements, testing windows, and alignment with community and stakeholder feedback. The calendar committee, also, it involves putting together a calendar committee, who have now been in process since October. The calendar committee consists of representatives from school leadership, teachers, students, central office staff, and parents, as well as community stakeholders. The purpose of this exhibit tonight is for information to outline the calendar adoption process, including committee work, opportunities for feedback, and a proposed timeline for presenting feedback to the superintendent, who will make a recommendation on December 9th to the Board of Education. As you can see on the screen, here outlines our timeline for our committee work. We started back in October. On October 13th, looking at all of the state and law requirements, including holidays. We looked at other calendars from other LEAs. We also looked at calendar impact. We also reviewed the process for the calendar draft submissions. Each of our committee members have the option to go back and submit a calendar submission. And then, on October 27th, we came together in an in-person meeting. At that meeting, we had the presentation of all of our calendar drafts. I believe there were four calendars submitted that night from mainly teachers. We had a reflection and discussion on all of those drafts submitted. And then, we chose the top two of those samples to present to you tonight that will also be presented for stakeholder feedback. You have a copy of both Sample A and Sample B. I'll just mention a few highlights of those calendars. You also have a school calendar comparison chart. And if you can see, there's a lot of similarities in both Sample A and Sample B. There is one student day difference. There's 168 in Sample A, 169 in Sample B. The first day of school is August 24th, both calendars. There is one day difference with the last day of school. Winter break and spring break remain the same, and the first day for staff and the last day for staff remain the same. The main difference between these two calendars is the end of the second quarter or semester break. In Sample A, semester break ends in January. And in Sample B, it ends in December. Therefore, the difference in the days noted for Semester 1 and Semester 2. Also, there is one additional workday in Sample A due to the fact that we end in January. There was one extra workday added for that end of semester, which denotes the difference in the instructional hours. 1,092 and 1,098 is the difference in the hours for students. We are well within our needed hours of 1,025. We have worked for our website to go live tonight for our feedback. It will consist of both samples out for our community as well as a community feedback form that they can submit. And on November 24th, we will come back as a committee, a calendar committee, and review all of the stakeholder feedback from the community. As well as each principal of each school will receive an email with a school feedback form in which they've been instructed to meet with their school improvement teams, review both samples of calendars, and submit the feedback form from each school that we will also take in consideration when we look at all the stakeholder feedback on November 24th. We will share all that feedback with our superintendent, who will then make a recommendation on December 9th. Are there any questions?
This is an information item. This will be an action item in our December meeting. Any questions?
Ms. Whittington, how are parents and community members going to receive notification to provide feedback on the website? Are they going to get, are parents going to get text messages and all the stuff?
Yes. Richard, do you want to say how all the fancy things that you're going to do tonight?
Certainly, they'll receive it in various forms. They'll receive it from all of our social media platforms throughout the district. There will also be, there's a webpage designed for it. They'll be directed to that webpage from the landing page of our main website as well as the school's landing page. But then also, in a few moments, we're going to hit the button for them to receive a call, text message, and an email, making them aware of that. And we plan to do that same process a few times throughout the next few weeks.
Awesome. Thank you.
It'll be right on our banner page, so they'll be able to, as soon as they open the page, they can see it.
I always have concerns about non-days because of their impact on our classified staff and their pay. And I see that both calendars have non-days although they are placed in different months. One in November for Calendar B and in December for Calendar A. Just in keeping in mind our classified staff, is there a month where they would feel that the least? I guess this might, because we don't have options outside of having a non-day there unless we made some other calendar adjustments. Do we have anything that would indicate one or the other? That would...
We can take that into consideration and see when it happens compared to supplement, things like that.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Any other comments?
I believe the semester ending in December, does that put exams prior?
Yes, sir.
Prior to Christmas. So, that, now, is that noted somewhere? So, John Q. Public would know the difference between the calendars?
On the calendar comparison chart, it does show that the quarter ends in December. And so, with that, with each high school, they will advertise their exam schedules as well. And so, with that being the end of the semester, they should be aware of that.
We could add that to board members if y'all think that would help. We could put exams on the last five days of each of...
You know, I'm not sure it'd be overtly apparent to the general public that, you know, hey, well, we're going to do exams by Christmas.
Any other discussion?
Ms. Whittington, I'm assuming that there'll be a Spanish version of this as well?
Absolutely. Already there and ready to roll.
Awesome. Thank you.
And are we considering, you know, I know that the push for having exams before Christmas break, it's been the controversy surrounding our calendars for years versus having them in January. I'm a big fan of instructional time. And nobody should be surprised by that statement. But do we have, are we making that decision on promoting that calendar based on data from a shorter instructional semester? That is always going to be where the buck stops with me is what does our data from Semester 1 exams look like? And I know this year, we'll be able to retest those exams earlier, I think. So, that is always my question. Can you speak to that, Ms. Whittington?
We don't, I would caution the board to say we have any data that helps you correlate one-for-one because high school exams are a different group of students each year. I think what we did see that we chatted about earlier is there was some Math 1 drops. But whether we can attribute that to the shortened calendar or not, we had Math 1 drops in other semesters as well. And we will not have back this year's data before you vote on this calendar in December. But other than that, we really don't have any data that's a one-for-one, per se.
I know we can leave it up to schools to be creative in their system and make sure they target stronger students in certain areas for their shorter semester classes. And then, making sure that kids who need more instruction, more instructional days. I just want to make sure that that is actually, like, happening in our schools.
A priority, yes.
It's happening. We have some that don't have any Math 1 this semester in high schools. They didn't do any Math 1 courses.
They showed, at the work session, they showed us the numbers. It is clearly happening. And not only that, but this doesn't impact anybody but the high school truly. The elementary and middle schools are going to continue their schedule as normal either way, either calendar. So, we're just talking about high school here.
And there wasn't any data that pointed directly to scores falling in high school based on the short semester. Does math, the math scores fell both the short semester, and ironically enough, they fell during the long semester.
Right.
Any other? Any other discussion? Well, thank you for the information. We look forward to you coming back in December.
I look forward to bringing you the input.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Weller? Ms. Weller?
Good evening, board. I'd like to introduce Ms. Kristi Stevenson to present our retesting and summer learning plan.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, I'd like to give you an update to the retesting practices that the State Board is allowing us some flexibility with this year as well as request approval from you to be able to offer some retesting opportunities during the summer. What the NCDPI has released that any student that is not proficient on an end-of-grade or end-of-course assessment this year is eligible to retest. That has been the case the past several years. But previously, we've had to wait until school is out in order to retest these students. But now, our options that are available to us is to retest during the legislative testing window, which for high school and of course assessments is the last five days of the semester. So they will be able to retest students that are not proficient in the fall semester, in the fall, instead of having to wait until the end of the year as has been the case in the past. Also, for our spring semester, that will be, again, the last five days for end-of-course. And for end-of-grade, it's the last 10 days of the school year. The other option that we have is to allow retesting during a summer program with the stipulation that this program is an eight-day minimum program. Student participation is voluntary. So parents would need to give permission for the student to participate in the retest administration. Also, the retest will not only count towards proficiency if students become proficient, but the higher of the two scores will be used for growth calculations. So in the past, it's been mainly on the proficiency side. Now it will be for both growth and proficiency as long as it occurs during the legislative test window. Additionally, which is a positive for our high school and of course assessments, is that retest score can now, again, if it's higher, can be used as part of the 20% exam grade. We are required to count at least 20% of the student's final average from that end-of-course exam. So now they can, if they're not successful the first time and they retest and they get a higher score, that can now be figured into the calculation. Our plan is to retest during the legislative test windows. We have a communication plan already in progress. Several of our schools have already sent a letter out making parents aware that this opportunity will be available should their student not be proficient on the assessment the first time. They will also be contacting the families after testing occurs to let them know the actual remediation and retest plan for their child. We are encouraging a minimum of two hours of remediation per subject prior to the student retesting with the only stipulation that they cannot remediate and retest in the same subject on the same day. And that is state practice there. While we are using that state legislative testing window so we can get both growth and proficiency, we are requesting that the board approve the opportunities for schools to be able to offer a minimum eight-day summer program. In the case, there are some extenuating circumstances. This will allow our schools the flexibility to work with families in the event, for some reason, a student cannot come back and take the test during the final five or 10 days. The school would be responsible for coordinating this with the family. We would not be providing transportation or anything like that. Again, it's a flexibility. We want to afford our schools so they can work with our families should the need arrive. All assessments would need to be completed by June 30th to count in this accountability year. And any testing that occurs during this time would only count towards proficiency and not growth. So again, we would request your approval to be able to offer this for our schools and families should the need arrive. Any questions?
This is an action item. I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion by Mr. Donovan. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Lee, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the approval of the EOG/EOC retesting and summer plan that has been presented to us. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Massingill? Board members, you have in your packet some information about what we will be discussing.
Good evening, Dr. Pierce, members of the board. On Capitol Projects Department, we have three projects to present tonight. The first one... No, you're fine. Okay, okay. First project, the North Johnson High School renovation track project. We received four bids on October 2nd. The low bid was bar construction with a base bid of $1,419,000. And we are recommending an additional owner contingency of $24,000, $25,000. Making the total recommendation to the board, $1,444,000.
This is an action item. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
A motion by Mr. Tippett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Antoine, any discussion?
What was, do we know what was budgeted for that bond? I'm looking at the bond committee.
$3.5 million.
Was the, that was for all the projects?
Right, $3.5 million, $3.5 million for each one of these projects, for the total of the three projects.
With the total, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other, wait a minute, any other discussion?
I just want to point out, because I think it's important for the public, the exhibit sheet I've just seen, there's a comma in the wrong place. It is not 144 million, it's 1,440. So we'll get that corrected.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the approval of the request for the track resurfacing of North Johnson High School. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you, next one.
All right, second one, North Johnson High School tennis court replacement project. We received five bids on October 5th. The low bidder, GO surfaces, with a base bid of $728,670,000. And we're asking for an additional $10,000 in owner contingency. So the total recommendation would be $738,670,000 for that project.
This is an action item. I'll entertain a motion.
Tom moves.
A motion by Ms. Antoine, a second by Ms. Lee, any discussion?
Madam Chair, before you accept the second, is there, for clarification purposes, is there a color included in the motion?
The recommendation would be for the Wilmington blue with the green boundary and white lines.
You say green boundary?
It's the outer boundary.
Would be green?
Yes. And then the court service would be the Wilmington blue.
Okay, Madam Chair, at this point, I call point of order.
A point of order for what? We have a motion and a second. We need to vote on the motion in a second.
The chair actually second, accepted the second. Understood. Want to take among the board to proceed with next? What is the point of order?
The point of order is the board is not following proper procedure for the motion that was made.
I didn't hear you say that you...
I asked for clarification on the motion before...
I don't remember, I don't remember you asking for clarification. I don't remember you asking for clarification. Now, Ms. Antoine made the motion, Ms. Lee seconded.
And I asked for clarification, that's why Mr. Massingill responded.
After the motion, you asked for clarification?
After the motion, not...
Second.
I asked for clarification before, I said before you accept the second.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
It's on video, isn't it?
About the same time.
He did say that, he said it after you would accept the second. Right.
According to the parliamentary procedure, I'm not allowed to call point of order at any time legally?
Yes, but you can also make an amendment to the motion if you would like. And that would accomplish, I think, what you're seeking to do? Not sure.
Okay. So do I tell why, do I discuss why I think we're not following proper procedures?
Absolutely.
Okay. There is a standard for tennis court colors. I think Dr. Pierce has stated the standard. The board didn't vote on a standard. The standard came from the superintendent and the designee, which gives each one of our schools the opportunity to request a deviation from that standard. So therefore, it is my contention that at this point in time, the only business, and on my head, North Johnson High School has followed all proper channels. They've gone to their administrator. The administrator has spoken with the superintendent. They've contacted the Booster Club president. The advisory council president has also followed all proper channels in notifying their board representative of this. I've also taken that to Dr. Pierce. Before the board votes on a color, according to, as similar as you can get to our policy manual for grievances or for complaints, the proper procedure would be for North Johnson High School and its representatives to have a discussion with Dr. Pierce to see if they come to an agreement on a proposal. Because by the board not putting a standard in place, the board has given Dr. Pierce the authority to discuss with individual schools any kind of deviation. Am I correct on that?
I have not been aware that Dr. Pierce did anything about the color of the track.
No, my saying is that the standard is what Dr. Pierce and the chief, at this time, Mr. Massingill asked.
I think the standard would be what we've done across the county over the years. And it's been the blue, and is that correct?
No, that's all fine and dandy. However, I'm focused on the procedure process. The procedure would allow for an individual school to discuss it with their superintendent, for that superintendent to then see if there's an agreement. If there is no agreement, then it would come to the board for a board decision, just like any other question that comes up. I think the board is getting ahead of itself on voting at this point in time on a color. The board's primary duty at this point in time is to accept a bid. Because I don't think we have to decide on a color at this point in time. Yes. We don't do any. No, 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 we do not have to decide on a color. So I think the board, at this time, the board accepts the bid. Dr. Pierce with the people at North Johnston.
I disagree, as board member, that you have a point of order because the motion in the second was prior to you saying anything. The chair didn't hear it, I'm not sure who heard it. I'm not sure that we have a point of, you could make an amendment if we approve the project. You're certainly free to amend it, to talk about the color.
I understand that, but actually, I mean, you don't have the, you don't have the authority to say whether I have a point of order or not. That's the chair's decision.
Excuse me, I'm just saying, I don't think I heard what you were saying.
No, I understand. I said it in there so I could say, because it has to, because I know it has to be done between the motion and the second. And that's why I said before you accept the second.
Chair, I appreciate you bringing this to the... My only question is, I have a concern about that because if we do vote on it, we're voting on the bid, which is tied to RFQ, and RFQ includes the blue.
Well, the bid documents would include the blue.
I don't want you to assume that we're going somewhere that...
No, no.
Yeah, yeah.
Through the submittal process, as the project progresses, that's when the color selection could be chose. So choosing the color tonight doesn't hold up or move the project forward. Because I believe that the administration and the people of North Johnston was told that they would not have to decide on a color at this point in time.
They were told that?
Yes.
As a board, we did not see the scope of work that was bid on. So we didn't see all the details. All we saw was this bid sheet that showed the bidders and the number they came back with. So as a board, we have no, we have no information before us that would say it's going to be this color or they're going to use this kind of material or even the length at the time of the project. So to your point, I don't think we are actually moving anything forward other than funding the money to do it.
Correct. That's my point. And I don't think a color is included in the motion. Who made the motion?
We don't have any information to say it's about the color.
So if you, would you amend that motion to exclude a color?
I don't think you have to.
Because the color's not decided. As far as moving the project, so if the project is awarded tonight, the contractor would get a notice to proceed. And he would start with his submittal process, which is a lot of stuff, including the color. So by my opinion, by moving it forward tonight, wouldn't necessarily lock in the color if the color needed to be changed. So the option will be, the option will be there to change the color if enough board members want to actually work with coaches and students to give them something they actually want?
That's, let's, we'll stick to what we're talking about.
Okay, so that's my question. So the option would still be there? As far as colors? Yes, by accepting this, this project to move forward, they're not ordering the paint today. Exactly. Right. And that will be down the road? Right. Because this project's not going to start until when? I don't have that actually, the date of that project, but... Spring.
Early spring.
Yes. Okay, so by the action tonight, the option is still there to look at colors? From my perspective, I would say yes. From your perspective, yes.
Okay, any other?
The contract only references the word, yeah. The contract only references the word color. It doesn't specify that it's... No, I just looked at...
So the action item is the approval of the expenditure of these funds for tennis courts for North Johnson High School.
Okay.
That is, that is the, that is the motion in the second. That's what we're voting on. And we'll let Dr. Pierce get with the...
I do think it's important to state the facts that I have spoken to administration multiple times on these tennis courts and colors. And as I shared with the board, it has been our standard of colors since the triple S tennis courts were done several years ago, that the courts would be the Wilmington blue, the outside green. That was also done for the Wilson Mills High School build, the Clayton High School, Cleveland. So that's just been our standard, what we've done. As I shared with you all, if you want to change the standard, I will start bringing you colors. If that's what y'all want to pick as a board, for you all to pick out. But that's, I shared with you all in the beginning, that was our standard that we had put in place as a district.
Has any other, has any other school asked to go a different color?
Yes, sir.
And they were, was it a neutral color court? Gray, green, or blue?
No, sir.
Okay, the three neutral color courts, gray, green, and blue, which we can have this discussion later. Right now, we're just approving the project.
I do think the board would like to have the opportunity to talk about the colors at some point. I do think the board would like to have the opportunity to talk about the colors at some point. So we'll let, we'll approve the project and then we can go forward, okay?
Correct.
All right, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for the vote of the approval of the bid that has been placed before us for the North Johnston High School tennis courts. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, you have one more item?
Yes, North Johnston High School press box. Six bids were received on October 8th. The low bidder was Barn Hill Building Group for $369,222. We're asking for an additional owner contingency of $25,000, making the total cost $394,222.
This is an action item, I entertain a motion.
So move second.
I have a motion by Mr. Tippett, a second by Mr. Donovan, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote of the approval of the North Johnston High School press box. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you. We are a little bit ahead of our time for public comment, so I'm going to move into our chair and committee updates. Miss, I'll skip over to you, Mr. Donovan, do you have any updates? Policy committee, sorry.
Madam Chair, we met this past month for the policy committee, and we went over a few different policies that we have. Nothing crazy. So 1310 and 3320, pretty much parental involvement, we added restrictions of opposite sex members sleeping in the same quarters. 3620, extracurricular activities discusses NIL agreements. 6125, 5024, and 6127 covers a revision that we had to make for the new Epi, it's not Epi pens, but it's a nasal option for the Epi pens, and we want to make sure that we cover that in our policies. We will have a policy meeting November 20th at 9:00 a.m., so I invite the public to come and join us.
Thank you. Backing up, Mr. Tippett, finance?
The finance committee has met, again, we're working on content finishing this year's, this year's budget year in December, January, we'll start with next year's budget. The committee has been looking at a adjustment to the supplement scale for teachers. That will be presented in the near future. Are we going in December? Hopefully, that will be presented in December. So that's pretty much where we are at this point in time.
Mr. Carroll, bond and construction committee?
Bond and construction committee has been busy, we do have an update for you. We're going to show video of what's going on to update everybody around the county of what we got happening. Mr. Carr, thank you.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where there's always something great happening. Today, we're taking you on a visual tour, giving you a major update on our exciting construction and bond projects. Our first stop is Cooper Academy, a campus that's undergone a massive renovation and revitalization. Thanks to the 2022 bond, we added 20 classrooms, new offices, resource rooms, staff workrooms, and much-needed group restrooms. These additions have truly tied the school together, and Cooper is already getting a boost from the 2024 bond. The entire campus now features a brand-new, state-of-the-art fire alarm system. Next up is Swift Creek Elementary, a truly exciting addition to our district. This marks our 25th elementary school, a testament to Johnston County's vibrant growth. This stunning, over 900-capacity school showcases vibrant colors and brilliant economic design. The construction of the new Wilsons Mills High School, or WMHS, is progressing rapidly and remains on schedule for its fall 2026 opening. Visit the site today, and you'll see significant progress outside. All spectator stands are in place, and the athletic fields are either fully installed or well underway. The exterior of the building is nearing completion, giving a clear view of the finished structure. Inside, work is moving just as quickly. The first and second levels are heavily sheet rocked, framing is nearly complete, and crews have even begun priming the walls. We are so pleased with the speed and quality of this construction, and look forward to sharing more milestones as we head toward the 2026 school year. We had the opportunity, thanks to the county commissioners, to go ahead and reduce overcrowding and remove mobiles at Cleveland High School. This was a fast-paced project that was completed in time for students to come back to school. This addition made it possible to remove all the mobiles on campus and make a secure traversal between classes without the need to go outside or to mobiles. During the October 28, 2025 special session meeting, the Johnston County Board of Education voted unanimously to approve the Clayton High rebuild project. This exciting, long-awaited project will provide state-of-the-art facilities for Johnston County students, including 99 total teaching spaces, 19 CTE classes/labs, 13 science labs, a main and auxiliary gym, athletic fields and facilities, an extraordinary auditorium with a seating capacity of 762, and so much more, providing the learning spaces Clayton area families will be proud of for many years to come. The new 278,000-square-foot facility will serve as a cornerstone for 21st-century learning, designed with a focus on safety and security, state-of-the-art learning environments, athletic and fine arts spaces, and innovative technology and learning labs. While the design embraces modern educational needs, it also preserves elements of the school's historic culture that have defined generations of Clayton Comets. The Johnston County Board of Commissioners will vote on the project during their upcoming November 2025 regular scheduled meeting. JCPS plans to begin construction soon. The 2024 bond is already putting shovels in the ground across the county. Currently underway, we have the full build-out of Thanksgiving Elementary, adding six classrooms. Cleveland Elementary and Four Oaks Elementary are both receiving major, much-needed HVAC overhauls to bring them up to today's standards. And finally, projects in the design phase include additions at McGee's Elementary to add two new four-classroom wings, a new metal roof project over at East Clayton Elementary, and an exciting track and tennis court upgrade starting at North Johnston High in May of 2026. North Johnston High will also be receiving a press box for their baseball/softball field. That will start in the next few weeks.
Information department for putting together that little trip around the county and what's going on, so that's our report.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for the update.
That is, actually, that is my movie voice.
Slight resemblance.
Listen, all I had to do with that was ask Mr. Carr to give us an update, so he deserves, and his department deserves.
He deserves a lot of credit for a lot of things, we're very grateful to you, very grateful. Okay. Well, sooner or later, we'll get to the bottom, yeah. Whoever did it, thank you, okay? We do appreciate.
I think that is the most effective way of putting out to the public's eye really what's going on with the bond projects and with their tax money. So it's very informative, thank you.
I just have a few items as chair. This past Thursday and Friday, we had Joko Works at Johnston Community College, we had over 3,500 eighth graders come and visit different venues to visit businesses, to see just what was taking place in those career opportunities. I just want to say thank you to transportation for getting them all there and back safely, also to all the teachers who managed and maneuvered all these kids around that parking lot at JCC, and we do thank JCC for allowing us to use their facilities. Tomorrow, we have a special service of Veterans Day at Smithfield-Selma High School, it will start at the hour of 11:00 a.m., so we invite you all there. There's a lot going on in our schools right now as we approach the holiday season, and I just want to continue to encourage you to support our schools. Many people ask, what can I do to support the schools? You can attend events that our young people are involved in, you're going to have band concerts coming soon, you're going to have drama performances, music performances, athletics is still going on, I've already said that, I just, yeah, athletics are still going on, and so just please, continue to support. These young people like to see people in the seats and people in the bleachers, so we just thank all of you for that involvement. A Cleveland middle? Cleveland, yeah, this past week, I attended, Mr. Tippett and I attended a Cleveland Middle School celebration of Veterans Day on Friday, and it was wonderful. So thank you to the staff at Cleveland Middle School for that. Board members, we will move to our advisory appointments, you have several there. I will begin with Mr. Tippett, I'll use that as the motion, and then I will accept a second after all are read.
Thank you. Principal Michelle Butler at Corinth holders Elementary School has four individuals for the advisory council. They are Kristen Pierce, Ashley Young, Caroline Pennington, and Mandy Felizi. They are all for a three-year appointment through 2028. Principal Melissa Hurst at Corinth holders High School has one advisory appointment, Bethany Phelan, and it is also for a three-year term through 2028.
Ms. Lee?
Angela Hill at Dixon Road Elementary School has recommended Beth Lemke and Carrie Kessing, both for three-year terms for their advisory council.
And I asked Mr. Carroll to do the one for Mr. Sullivan.
Principal Sarah Willoughby from West Clayton Elementary has two recommendations, Faith Lawrence and Savannah Sains, both for a three-year term.
And Mr. Donovan?
Madam Chair, Mr. Derek Neal has recommended, along with the parent advisory council, the appointment of Letitia Crisp for a new appointment for 30 years.
Thank you. I will entertain a second to those motions. A second by Mr. Carroll, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote of the approval of these advisory appointments that have been presented to us. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Well, we're going to take a short break until 6 o'clock for public comment. Well, we're going to take a short break until 6 o'clock for public comment.
If we focus on what we can control while we have them here, we can make a difference in the lives of our students. So, our purpose will be fulfilled if we can remember that we can make a difference while we have them here. I am Tekeese Dunston, principal at Benson Elementary. I have been here for 11 years. When I walk into Benson Elementary every day, what inspires me is knowing that I have students, staff, and parents that are counting on me to make this the best place for learning, to make this the best place to work, to make this the best place to send students while you are at work as a parent. This is, it's just one of my passions to be here. Being named principal of the year personally means that I have set the tone and provided an environment for staff and students, parents, community, to come in and feel that they have a place that they can call home. Being named principal of the year allowed me to, to recognize that what I'm doing here at Benson Elementary has been seen, it is seen, and that there, a difference has been made in the environment. It's, it's hard when I see students that have a difficult time separating from their parents. I so understand that. Nobody wants to separate from that safe space, that safe person. And so, that's why it's so important that I build an environment or establish an environment that will allow students to see it as a home away from home and feel the joys of being here. It is just always important for me to provide that place that they want to come to. My north star is making sure that teachers and students come to an environment that will support them in learning and in teaching. I want students to come and feel good about being at school, excited about learning. I want teachers to come in to feel the joys of being a teacher and having the opportunity to work with students day in and day out, not thinking of it as a chore or even work, but something that's fun, that they enjoy doing. And if the teachers come in with that passion, then that passion is then transferred to our students, and our students come in with that same thrill of being at school and being excited about learning new things and showing what they are capable of doing. Our ultimate goal here at Benson Elementary is to be the first Title I school in Johnston County to be an A performance school. It is our goal that we have set, and we are working hard to achieve. So, we So we haven't gotten there, but it's coming.
Welcome to Johnston County Public Schools, where there's always something great happening. Today, we're taking you on a visual tour, giving you a major update on our exciting construction and bond projects. Our first stop is Cooper Academy, a campus that's undergone a massive renovation and revitalization. Thanks to the 2022 bond, we added 20 classrooms, new offices, resource rooms, staff workrooms, and much-needed group restrooms. These additions have truly tied the school together, and Cooper is already getting a boost from the 2024 bond. The entire campus now features a brand-new state-of-the-art fire alarm system. Next up is Swift Creek Elementary, a truly exciting addition to our district. This marks our 25th elementary school, a testament to Johnston County's vibrant growth. This stunning, over 900-capacity school showcases vibrant colors and brilliant economic design. The construction of the new Wilsons Mills High School, or WMHS, is progressing rapidly and remains on schedule for its fall 2026 opening. Visit the site today, and you'll see significant progress outside. All spectator stands are in place, and the athletic fields are either fully installed or well underway. The exterior of the building is nearing completion, giving a clear view of the finished structure. Inside, work is moving just as quickly. The first and second levels are heavily sheet-rocked, framing is nearly complete, and crews have even begun priming the walls. We are so pleased with the speed and quality of this construction and look forward to sharing more milestones as we head toward the 2026 school year. We had the opportunity, thanks to the county commissioners, to go ahead and reduce over-
Any discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, we are now adjourned.